There and. There you go. Good job. Thank you. Sorry to be a pain.
I've got Jamie.
Hi, Bill.
Hi.
Uh, any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll look for approval of previous meeting minutes if you guys had a chance to read.
I'll make a motion to approve the November twelfth meeting minutes for the planning commission and zoning board.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the meeting for the planning and zoning board. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All passed. Alright. Um. Well, Matt isn't here quite yet, so we can jump in without him and then when he shows up.
Laura Copeland is on and also um.
I'm what?
I'm sorry.
I think she just said she was on Laura.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I think somebody new came on Jamie and Jamie's mic was on and said that Laurel Copeland was on, so. Um, just to just, uh, you know, uh, for minutes for this meeting, of course, with lots of us remote, um, let me know if you need any help with, uh, with, uh, noting participants.
For those on the screen, Matt Bachelor just entered the space, so we're just gonna let him get settled for a moment.
Why don't you come on up and have a have a seat, Matt?
Hi, everyone.
Well. Once you get settled, we'll go around and introduce ourselves.
Okay. Sorry, I'm running a little late. I was meeting with the Marlboro.
Did we meet at a meeting once before here?
I think this is this is my first time down here, yeah, so please not before, yeah.
Yep. Well, I'm Tom Fox and chair the planning and zoning board.
Good to meet you.
I'm Stephen Chase, uh, chair of the plan of the Conservation Commission.
And Matt Gans, part of the planning and zoning board.
Caitlin Stone, prior of the planning and zoning.
Okay. We have our zoning administrator.
I'd be a good nice to you.
And the audience.
If you want, we can go around just.
Uh, sure, yeah. Uh, in the top left corner, we have, uh, Bill Puzey, another member of the planning zoning board.
Hello.
And then we have Mary Horn, who's a member of the Conservation Commission.
Hi.
I don't know Chris and Janice. Oh.
Good evening. This is Chris. I'm here just resident chiming in to hear what's going on. That's it.
Thank you.
Good to see you all. Thank you.
Leslie and Penfield, uh, Conservation Commission. Bonnie Brown, uh, Conservation Commission. Edie. Want to introduce yourself, Edie?
Hi, Edie.
E- Edie's chair.
Hey there. Yeah, Matt and I know each other from Wyndham Regional Commission work. Thank you for coming to Halifax. Sorry, I'm not there in person.
Laura Copeland, uh, Conservation Commission. Linda Yen is a citizen who spends time with Conservation Commission and Jane.
Okay. Um, so a while back, Matt sent us a a great email regarding, uh, short-term rentals, tiny homes, campgrounds, um, and examples of what other towns are doing. And believe we discussed that on some previous meetings and uh, I think there's I guess we can start with, if we want to start with tiny homes, I think that one's probably the easiest and quickest. Seems like
it's, yeah, it's a little more straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The sea life summers.
Hi, Matt.
Hi, Matt. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious to hear just, um, just because it's my first time meeting with you all, if there are particular concerns around tiny homes in Halifax?
Uh, they just seem to be popping up a lot everywhere and, uh, nobody knows. Uh, is this legit or what's going on?
Yeah.
Um, but I think that it's been kind of cleared up that, you know, it's either treated like a permanent structure or an IV or an RV.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my recommendation. Um, and that just kind of, I think that helps a little more cut and dry, um, because, right, if someone has a tiny home, that often tiny homes, um, are attached to some, you know, some sort of mechanism that they can move them around.
Yeah.
Um, and if that's the case and they're not, um, you know, and they're not building it to to code in terms of foundation requirements and connecting to a water and wastewater treatment uh, on the property, then it really is more of a temporary RV type of situation.
Portable camping unit.
Yeah, I think that is kind of a logical way to interpret it, um. And just to, I'm sure I've looked at Halifax's, uh, zoning bylaws, um, but not recently, but I'm sure you have standards in there. Uh, requirements for a dwelling unit having, um, you know, a space for, uh, sleeping and kitchen space and having uh, portable water and wastewater treatment.
Yeah, we we looked at refining the wording of that a little bit. We've got a few examples. Um.
Yeah.
Stolen from other places, so.
That's a good way to do it.
It's a treat from others.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I, and then it just, it becomes, um, you know, if that's kind of how the town is approaching it and interpreting it, it becomes a kind of enforcement. Um, case with your zoning administrator, if someone hasn't has a tiny home that's not meeting standards for, uh, you know, permanent residence. Um.
How are other towns enforcing it?
Well, it's true. I mean, it is tricky. Um, I will say it's tricky, um. Um, and I'm not sure how how Halifax regulates RVs, but I'm guessing it's you're allowed to have one maybe for a certain duration of time during a calendar year and yeah, and then it's a matter of how do you, you know, how do you track that? And if someone going out there every day to see. Right?
Exactly.
Yeah, um, so there there is that complication, um. I mean, I think, um, the situations where someone has a tiny home on their property and is living there full time, I think that's a little more clear.
Yeah.
Uh, but if someone's kind of trying to skirt the regulations, then they it can be hard to one hundred percent.
Yeah.
Enforce that, just because it becomes right, just a monitoring and enforcement issue and.
Now, is that something the town listers would keep track of or?
Well. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I guess it depends on how the town listers would, right, treat a tiny, if someone put up a tiny home, if they would.
Like if the square footage was big enough where they they're doing, uh, their you know.
Yeah.
Checking out a place and we, oh, now we've got this.
Yeah.
To add in.
Yeah, and that might be, I mean, it might be a way for the town to keep track of them, like if it's, if the listers are, um, also just going around and seeing that and kind of flagging that.
Okay.
Um, done for, yeah, zoning administrator, they might not be aware, oh, you know, so and so has this tiny home up and.
You remember Tina said that software is gonna have the tiny house stuff in it?
It kind of recall, it came down to us deciding how we were going to classify it.
Yeah.
So if if my memory is serving me correctly, you know, we were kind of moving toward basically saying we already have an umbrella.
Right.
To classify these, it's just a matter of actually classifying them, and if we have one that's not classified properly, then we can have this this next conversation.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and you might, you might want to take a look at, um, if this is kind of the direction you want to go in, just looking at how you're defining an RV or that type of, uh, temporary, um, living unit, just to to see if it's a broad enough definition that, um, it, um, is clear that tiny home would fall under it and try to argue.
Right.
Like, my tiny home doesn't count as this.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, this is something to check, you know, just in case.
I think that's the whole reason they weren't invented, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, hey, does anybody? Nope.
In terms of.
Yeah.
Enforcement.
Yeah.
We can have ordinances, but
Yeah.
if you don't have effective enforcement.
Yeah.
The ordinances are a bit shallow.
Mm-hmm.
So how how can?
Yeah.
How can a town like Halifax with very limited resources try and enforce these kinds of?
Yeah.
Uh, ordinances or or zoning regulation?
It it is a challenge, um, because, right, you need the administrative staff time to monitor these things and if you're gonna enforce, um, the town probably has procedures for how they go about enforcement, um, you know, sending an initial notification following up. Um, and if a property owner doesn't comply too, then, um, you know, the kind of the final step is getting, um, like a town attorney involved, which is just a, you know, whole much lengthy and costly process, and not that the town wants to do that, but it's, um, honestly, Stephen, it's just from my experience before working for the Regional Planning Commission, I've worked as a municipal planner and zoning administrator in the past and that probably, you know, top three issues for us is just enforcement and it's just it's hard because you can't, you don't know everything that's going on across the town and just monitoring and keeping track of things and the work involved with trying to follow up with a situation that's in violation, but there's only bylaws and getting enforcement takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, I wish there was an easy solution.
Kyle.
Yeah.
I know if you're making an ordinance for that type of stuff, it is enforceable via civil citation, um, and that type of stuff. It's just a matter of the town allotting some resources to make.
Yep.
Somebody's, you know, to make it worth somebody going out and writing civil citation, that's if there's gonna be something that, I mean, if you want to create ordinances on, um, you're gonna have to keep on top of it. You can't, you know, write this person ordinance and then for six months, everyone else is doing it same time. So it's definitely something that, um, is gonna be a pretty hefty.
Mm-hmm.
Time allotment.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, that's just kind of what comes down to, but I do think, uh, you know, I would like to think too that, um, you know, if the town does follow through with enforcement in a few cases, then people might start realizing, oh, the town is taking this seriously. Um, you know, that might help, um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just may have to start somewhere. Oh. Bonnie?
You have to unmute yourself, Bonnie.
Can you hear us, Bonnie?
Unmute.
Can you hear me now? Okay, um. One question would be does the town become aware that either a, uh, small home or a RV type small home has been put on a property either that is already a developed property or a field that somebody owns? Um, and if so, how do they become aware? And the only way I could see having that happen on a regular basis would be to create yet another form, uh, and make it known publicly, perhaps at the official town meeting, that in order to put a small home or an RV on property where it's already not established requires filling out a permit and that there are conditions to be followed, um, in a explanatory form that, uh, mean that the amount of time of residency will be monitored and followed up on if it exceeds whatever the town determines is the allowable limit. That is more procedural, but it seems to me you would need to get the information out there in a meeting where people became aware of it and or as a uh, mailing or handout that went out with another mailing so that everybody would get it. And that way to make it official, because otherwise it's going to be hiddenness.
Kyle?
I'd like to respond.
Go ahead.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, aren't we gonna have to be rewriting some of this here pretty quick anyway?
Yes.
Okay, so I feel like that would all just be put in whatever we put in for under RVs and tiny homes. It would fall under the same permit that anything else would fall under if it's over a hundred square feet and or you're gonna live in it.
Yes.
Um, I feel like that would all kind of fall into the same category, so if you had interest in doing something like she has mentioned, then you would just follow the regulations listed in the book and then the permit would either get approved or denied depending on what that's.
One of the things I appreciate about that, Kyle, is that that's adopted by the voters, so that's not us sitting here saying we're gonna be some sort of bureaucratic monolith that makes these rules for no apparent reason.
Yeah. It would be a lot, if we just put it in when in our new writing, then you wouldn't have to do a separate mailing and it would just be there.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh. Good. Hello.
Steven?
Matt from, uh.
Yeah.
Tiny home issue that's not connected to wastewater
Mm-hmm.
becomes, uh, an environmental problem, as it were, not just a social problem, but an environmental problem.
Yeah.
Does, does that lack of connection
Mm-hmm.
trigger another set of regulations that would require other entities such as the state or health officer or someone to get engaged that brings more authority to it?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, um, local health officer and, um, kind of relevant state agency too, um, if, right, if they're not um, yeah, connected to some sort of wastewater collection system or that type of temporary mobile home. Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? We all good here? Um, okay.
Cool.
Bonnie?
Um, in terms of the wastewater, um, we've heard recently about, um, seasonal buildings, uh, being constructed without, uh, a septic system or even water, um, where camp toilets are used and the reference to the Planning, uh, Commission that was made to allow to say that this was allowed under state law was that residency would be less than ninety days per year. Um, so that might apply to a tiny home, but it it probably be worth the Planning Commission looking into that state exemption to know more about it. Um, because I know of two call it houses that have been built in the last number of years without sanitation, uh, because they were going to be seasonal or vacation, uh, residences, um, occupied less than ninety days a year, so that if more activity is going to occur under that exemption, I I think it would be helpful to know uh, the state law or whatever is involved to to know exactly what's allowed and not allowed.
Yeah, again, it comes down to enforcement. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Um.
Do you have any connections, Matt, to any of the regional engineers that could help answer some of those questions for us that we could invite or talk to?
Hmm, I'm trying to think, um, just in terms of the wastewater.
Yeah, I think because we've had those questions pop up almost every, every meeting.
Okay. Um. Let me look into that and, um, I can figure out a good contact. There's probably, probably someone at the state, um, that can just give better guidance than I can.
Yeah, that'd be great.
With Margot, huh?
Margot might, who works in our office. Yeah, so I would talk to chat with her and just see, yeah, um.
Margot's the environmental natural resource.
Okay.
A staff member of the Regional Commission.
Yep. And Matt, just to clarify.
Yeah.
You're our guy as far as like all of this related stuff goes.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't really provide any introduction.
That's okay.
Rolled into it, so, um, so, yeah, so our Regional Planning Commission, um, my primary role is municipal planning assistance. Um, so we have some other staff members too that do municipal planning assistance. So I do technical assistance around zoning bylaw work, town plan update work. Um, I also work with towns, um, managing transportation projects that have received grants from the state. Um, I'm also working on our regional plan update, uh, for Wyndham Regional, but primarily I do municipal planning assistance. Um, so having these types of meetings, the meeting I just came from in Marlboro, just meeting with planning commissions and
Yep.
providing guidance and, um, but it's also, you know, a lot of it is the follow-up too, so additional questions that come up, then I can follow up with you and get you in contact with other people. But I'm a resource going forward.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, if nobody has anything else on tiny houses, we'll move into short-term rentals. Um. So, uh, we spoke about zoning bylaws, but then when you sent that email and the word ordinance came up,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think that was the saving grace.
Um, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, is it as simple as, like, I have several examples of the orden that you guys
Yeah.
sent. Is it as simple as like adopting one of those and?
Mm-hmm. So, yes. Uh, recommend, my recommendation is to do it through an ordinance, um, versus through your zoning bylaws. Um, you know, as I mentioned, most of the towns that I'm aware of that are addressing it, um, it is through an ordinance, um, adopted by the select board um, and not through zoning. Um, I know Wilmington is addressing it through their zoning bylaws, um, and that's the only town I know of in our region.
Yeah.
That is doing it that way. Um, and so it's, and I kind of explained, yeah, in my email, uh, just kind of some of the benefits um, of why doing it as an ordinance instead of a zoning bylaw, um, and if it would be, I could walk through those.
More effective enforcement?
Yeah.
Uh, they can be adopted and amended as needed in less time. How how do you?
Yeah.
Adopt an ordinance?
So it it's adopted, it's adopted by the select board. There's still a public hearing, um, process, uh, that's required for that, um. And I, you know, I think in many of these towns that have adopted ordinances, um, the planning commission has worked on drafting
Yeah.
the ordinance, like the select board has tasked them with that. Uh, but as compared to the zoning bylaws where the planning commission also holds a public hearing for the, um, for that ordinance, it would just be the select board that's holding the hearing, uh, and adopting it. Um, and so that, um, just in getting something, uh, adopted initially is faster and then if you need to amend it.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it it's not that much additional work to go through the planning commission too, but it is simpler, um, if it's just through the select board. Um, and, you know, one thing I mentioned too in here with the, as you know, with the zoning bylaws, when you change your zoning bylaw, um, you know, then if you if you put in your zoning bylaw, some regulations on short-term rentals, then that could become a legal non-conforming use. Uh, if it's already existing before the zoning bylaws get changed, but with an ordinance that, um, that's not the case with an ordinance, so, uh, property would need to come into compliance, uh, with any short-term rate, short-term rental regulations if it's in an ordinance, um, compared to a zoning.
Nobody's grandfathered in, so to speak, yeah.
Right, and um, I I found too, I'm not sure, um, you know, how many, if you have a sense of number of short-term rentals in Halifax or issues.
We're told there's more and more all the time, but I'm not aware of a lot of them.
Yeah.
What would be the reason other than tax income that the town would say? This is a good reason that I should, I should talk to my fellow townspeople that were doing this.
Yeah, um, sorry, a good, a good reason for the town to put this in place to have an ordinance, yeah. I think, um, I mean, the thing I like about ordinance too is, um, just from talking to towns, a lot of the concerns around short-term rentals are about overcrowding, too many people occupying a home, parking issues and noise and the ordinance is kind of a more effective way to address those kind of, um, nuisance issues, um, that might come from someone using a property for a short-term, short-term rental, um, and you know, some towns, I think it's Chester, um, from the examples I sent, they've set a cap on the number of short-term rentals that are, that they will issue a permit for each year.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, I think that's more of an issue if you're really I think that's the only example I've seen of a town setting a cap.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, that might be more of an issue if there is just kind of a large number, um, and you're trying to limit them, but I think I think most, most towns I've talked to are generally, you know, they see there are benefits with short-term rentals, um, just in terms of you know, providing opportunities for visitors to come stay, family members to come stay. Um, you know, if it's a second home, a seasonal home, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be occupied more time of the year. If it's a short-term rental potentially, so there are benefits, but there are impacts too.
Are, are you aware of any towns that are having problems with the ordinance?
Well, that's interesting. I mean, I think I honestly, a lot of these ordinances that I had sent you, I have been put in place within the last two years.
Yeah.
And so they're very new.
Young.
So I think it's, um, one thing I would just recommend to Halifax, um, is, you know, taking time to look at these different examples. You've probably saw there's a lot of similarities between them and with anything. Ordinances and zoning bylaws, towns tend to look at what other towns are doing and copy things that make sense for them, so, um. But I would recommend looking at those examples, um, if you need more examples, um, you know, I can look around. There aren't a lot of examples out there, but, um, but I would recommend too, if you have any way to, and we can, we could put you in touch too with these towns to see how it's going, like how the, since it's gone into effect, how the ordinance is working for them, um, again, they are very new in most of these towns, um, but there may be some lessons learned already, which would be helpful to know before you, yeah, put something into place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes local ordinances conflict with state regulations or state laws.
Yeah.
And then the ordinance gets taken away because of a conflict.
Yeah.
Does the state have any regulations regarding short-term rentals that, uh, that Halifax needs to look at in terms of developing that sort of mess?
They do. They have regulations in terms of life safety regulations because, um, the occupancy numbers, um, for short-term rental, I mean, it depends on the number of bedrooms and the number of people that are occupying the space, but, um, many of them do meet that requirements that, um, the state fire marshal does need to. Um, I'm kind of forgetting exactly what it is, but there are some requirements, but the state fire marshal, um, when it comes to short-term rentals, and so the, most of the, um, in the examples I've looked at of other ordinances, the town is very clear about, you need, you need to be following these state requirements.
Yeah.
Um, and provide documentation that you are doing that, and I think it is something just to keep track of because I know there have been kind of ongoing discussions at the state level about, is the state gonna do anything statewide to regulate short-term rentals, and I think
Yeah.
there hasn't been any recent movement on that, but that could change.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to ask, um, Edie still there?
Uh, Edie?
Oh, Edie, I was gonna ask you a question first.
You go first, Matt, because I was gonna ask you a question, so go ahead.
I'm curious if this has popped up on your radar as something the townspeople are concerned about, or if you're hearing kind of anecdotally anything of, you know, noise complaints or safety complaints regarding short-term rentals.
Um, I did hear, uh, from one resident, um, who lives on the end of a road, um, and you know, this was uh, probably a few years ago during COVID and just, they they just said that it was kind of a constant stream of different people on that, on that section of road. Um, so that, that has been one thing that's come to my frame of reference. Um, and the thing I wanted to ask you in response, um, you had mentioned, is there any reason for people to do this besides income for the town? But my question about the, um, the ordinance idea is, my assumption is that any fees involved with, um, with creating a short-term rental registry would really Um with creating a short term rental registry would really be designed to be kind of cost recovery. Not really a a a means to um to make money, um but you know, if we are providing additional. Uh services in terms of tracking these things, making sure that they have appropriate, um you know, occupancies or other, again, life safety issues. Um that, you know, that we would have the means to fund that, because again, it would be adding to probably this owning administrator. Laws uh or you know, responsibilities, so, so with that in mind, I guess I was wondering when you said that, what you were thinking.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, Edie, so I guess my concern is kind of the, the consistent trend of local government to move toward regulation. Um and so if we can avoid unnecessary regulation, then I think that's, that's an important thing that we take. As a principle, I'm seeing folks in the crowd here nodding their heads in affirmation of that, um and so, uh you know. Again, I think there is, that needs to be balanced, of course, with um. With adjacent property owners, and so if my property values are being diminished or my health and safety is being jeopardized. Because of a short term rental or because of somebody dumping wastewater because they have a tiny home, you know, twenty five feet away from my property line, that's a different story. Um so again, I I want to balance the principles of increasing any sort of regulation with um. Kind of the, the freedom that people have to use their property as they see fit, um and so I I just wanna be conscious of that, I don't, I don't have an answer to those problems regarding that. I just wanna make sure that lens is being um being promoted.
Yeah, and I think, I think from a um sort of municipal services perspective, right? One of the things we have, you know, is this constant pressure to like plow the roads faster and do more, right? Do plow, plow further, do more, um so there's that burden and then the burden on other entities that don't. That don't directly impact us, but you know, is this, is this becoming a burden for the Halifax Fire Company? Um in, in terms of um it just, again, people who might be doing things that aren't necessarily safe because, you know. Well, I don't know, I think sometimes people coming out of town think that it's okay to to light fireworks in our town and it's not, right? So those are the kinds of other services that might be impacted by that, if I may follow up with just another quick question, um. Uh is just to say, the select board for the last two years has put on the town warning. Um, a note saying, should we collect uh revenue for uh rooms? And that hasn't been, uh the first year, I think we didn't have enough information and decided after some discussion. Not to further discuss, and last year it just was like, let's just not do this. There are, um the state has provided that more towns can collect that with more ease now. And we were discussing at the select board whether to put it on the town warning yet again, so. Just interested to know if people think that's a worthy thing to have on the um on the town warning, please follow up with me. Um directly on that, I won't take more time from your meeting, but um but again, to 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 provide the services that we do. You know, people who are coming in, using the roads, using, you know, our, our, our space here in, in this town. Do we want to consider a small tax that would uh bring some revenue back to the town? So follow up with me directly if you have comments on that, thank you.
Thanks, Edie.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. A, a, a question about that, sorry, don't mind me, um. The difference between an ordinance and uh zoning bylaws. You've, I hadn't been aware of the distinction or the possibility for the town to have ordinances on various topics. Um is, and are ordinances. Something the town can do on other topics other than zoning and planning? For example, if the conservation commission felt the need for a, an ordinance on something. Or something about class four roads, uh can the town move to an ordinance? For other topics.
Edie is gonna answer your question.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so I wanna state that while ordinances are probably easier than amending bylaws, there's still like a timeframe and a, and a process. And legal counsel will probably be consulted on any ordinances that we do create, so don't think it's something I can turn around in, in uh two, two. Weeks or two months, I think it's something that will probably be more like a four month process, and to the extent that our committees can, can draft those and. Bring them to the select board for consideration certainly would be helpful. Um but yes, we are, we are planning to adopt a highway ordinance, we have not yet begun work on that, but that would be where we would put information. Again, about um class four roads and trails because it can be enforced. Um according to our attorney, so that's just a very quick update on that, um but yes, um we have a junk ordinance, for example. Enforcement is the problem still, right? We have, we have other, we do have a highway ordinance now, it's just pretty, pretty old, so. Um so those are the kinds of things we, we try to address on the select board side, yep.
Great, thank you. Great, uh anybody else on short term rentals? Matt, do you think we covered everything?
Yeah, and I would just respond to just concurring with what Edie said about, um. Right, the fees collected through a registration per, it's usually just covering administrative costs and they usually, you know, keep them pretty minimal.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's just more of a monitoring system.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Good enough, uh if there's nothing else, we'll peruse campgrounds and RVs real quick. We did have some campground issues, and we probably still do have some campground issues. I think it's just uh when we get to the point of revising our zoning bylaws. I think there's some loopholes in our definitions as well.
Yeah.
That may come into play.
Right. Yeah, evil contradictions potentially.
Yes.
Clear, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh but uh same thing, your, your examples of campgrounds are. I think ours are.
Yeah. Here's a pretty consistent with what other towns have, um yeah, there are a couple of small things that some towns have that. You don't have, and I'm not sure the value of adding those in.
I think we just need to, to keep that on our radar for when we change the wording of stuff.
Um, yeah.
You know, now, do you guys, as the conservation committee, have anything you wanna add into that?
One of the, the things about the campgrounds, um depending on the size of the campground is. There, there's no obvious connection for the proponent of the project. To understand the relationship between the town's use and the trigger to Act two fifty.
Yeah.
And once a campground exceeds a certain size with a certain amount of activity. Uh it's subject to Act two fifty and landowners, I think, need to understand that earlier than they do.
Maybe we can put something in the, the regs that. That expresses that.
Yes, that, that gets them into uh at least understanding.
Just the awareness.
Cuz they're, they're thresholds, though they're modifying Act two fifty now, the threshold seems to be, if there's. Uh ten acres or more being developed, it will trigger Act two fifty. Which for most citizens is a wholly, totally different world.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I've heard campground, it's probably, you know, most cases it's gonna be more than ten acres in size, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Other than that, it's just camping.
Yeah.
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 It's a low trigger.
Yeah.
A, a low threshold.
Yeah.
But pe, I think people need to, to understand that.
Yeah.
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 So anybody have any questions or anything to add to that?
Yeah, Bonnie does.
Yep, Bonnie.
You're muted, Bonnie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As has been said before at the meeting with the prospective campground owner, uh other. Things the town needs to address on its forms are um the. Making sure the landowner is aware of the activity restrictions. On the land being proposed for a campground such as um Conservation District. And I know that's been discussed before, but it's something to follow through on, um making sure the forms are clear. That the um, the party proposing the campground needs to check off whether or not. Certain activity or usage districts are involved that might preclude their. Or restrict their, their doing the campground.
That'd be under conditional use, right?
It would be under conditional use, um and just as a personal opinion, I feel as if. The person trying to put the permit in should be the one educating themselves on what they are and are not allowed to do in a district.
Yeah.
I feel like as a committee, as a board, we should not have to go individually to every person and say. If you ever wanna do this, this is what you're allowed to do.
I agree, we're, we're just here to say yes or no.
That is what the meeting is for when the conditional use permit comes in, where if you don't know about something, we'll tell you.
Yeah.
If I can comment on that, the big issue this past fall with the camp, prospective campground owner. Was that they were out of state, they may or may not have known about the restrictions of activity in. For example, the Conservation District, um but I think it's needed that on the uh. Application form for conditional use, they need to specifically check off. Um blanks as to the, the district or districts that they're proposing developing in. Because that forces them to research if they haven't already.
They are.
Whether or not they're in that district, because if they're from out of state, they're not going to.
Yeah. Maybe we can make it a little bigger for them, it was pretty small. Yeah. Um, yeah, yeah.
Could I, Matt, from, from your perspective?
Yeah.
For both tiny houses and short term rentals, what's the next step?
Yeah.
What should the next step?
Yeah.
Be for the town?
Well, I think for, for short term rentals, um I think. Having a, having a conversation with the select board, um I, you know, I think if. I think if the town, if the town sees it as an area of concern and something where they would like to have some regulations in place, and I appreciate. A comment about um not wanting to just layer on additional regulations, and I think it's important with zoning and with ordinance. Ordinances, it's always important to keep in mind that, um you know, there, there are some minimum requirements that you need to have in there, but you can also. Set up your ordinance so that it's not like a huge burden, I mean, to, so address like.
Yeah.
The major concerns, but leave other things if the town chooses to, you can, you can do that, so there, there will be towns that. Do much more extensive ordinances and you might, that might not make sense in Halifax, so it's important to keep that.
Yep.
In mind, but I think, I think meeting with the select board uh a, about the short term rental question, I think. Um if you're either gonna do it in the zoning bylaws or as an ordinance, um. Wanting to make sure that that's something that the select board is supportive of, um and um if the select board. Um chose to do it, they could have the planning commission work on a draft.
Right, yeah.
To bring back and work with them on that.
We could take one of these examples if you butcher it often.
Yeah, yeah, but for, yeah, the tiny home, it's, it sounds like for. Uh there's maybe some tweaking in some of the uh zoning language, um.
Yeah, minor, minor stuff.
Yeah.
You did, did a blur.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Indeed, I did.
Yeah, yeah, and I can follow, I'll follow up with um Margot at our office, just about the wastewater.
Yeah.
Questions and just.
Again, as major issues with that, I think your enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, but just making sure, right, you, making sure too that the town knows. Who to contact, maybe you already know who to contact with the state, but.
I do know.
Okay, just to, yeah, I'm happy to, yeah, if we can get that contact for you, then, then it's easier, cuz it's always hard to, you know. People will say, just contact the state. What is that? Yeah, so having a person uh you can actually call is really helpful.
Now, typically, if you contact the state.
Yeah.
Um, are they pretty good at responding and coming in?
Yeah.
Or are we talking?
I guess it. I think it depends, yeah, and I, yeah, and because, yeah, because um, just because, you know, my. Yeah, my job, I, I'm not directly contacting that much over them, over these issues and um. So I'm not, I, I don't have a, a clear answer on that, so I think it depends kind of on the situation. Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, good, yeah, that's a start.
Yeah.
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 We'll keep going.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, what do you know about town trails and class four roads? And why is it such a hot issue, it seems?
Boy, yeah, um and I know, I know you've had convers, some conversations with. Um Colin.
Yeah, we came to the select board.
Okay, okay.
This is probably more of a select board issue, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they asked us to look at it.
We're trying to stay proactive.
Um, yeah, I think, and I know Edie mentioned the select board was looking at a highway ordinance that would address. Class four roads and legal trails, and that is most commonly, but we see um how towns address it.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, I mean, uh I guess. Just get me, I guess, if you can catch me up to speed on kind of where.
Um.
Where things are at with conversation.
Well, just like uh somebody wanting to develop.
Yep.
Their land on a town trail or class four road.
Yeah.
Um, we also, we have someone who they own land on either side. Uh it crosses what transitions from a road to a trail, I believe, I, I think that she's in the meeting. Um, actually.
Well, maybe.
Uh but it's an issue where basically she wants to be able to move, like have a gate so that she can make use of both sides of her land because of livestock.
Okay.
Because it's legally, it's an open trail.
Yeah.
There's been like, I know that's been an ongoing issue because there are people who want to make use of their entire property, but they can't legally put a gate. And that limits their like livestock moving abilities.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Edie, do you mind speaking on this issue? Cuz I feel like we've kind of all orbited into this, this conversation, but I feel like you probably have the best. Ten thousand foot view of this.
No, not really, but thanks for trying to pass the buck back here. No, um, I think, I think really just as an update, um since we uh first spoke about. You know, my concerns about this was a complicated issue and there were, I know, other groups that might be able to shed light in different directions. Um I did have a conversation, uh the, the vice chair and I went and spoke with town council, and town council was of the mind that indeed. Um these things should be addressed in a highway ordinance, um we have not had time to look at the highway ordinance at, at all. Um but it is something that's on the select board's, um you know, dream plans of the stuff we're gonna get to. Um and um and indeed, I mean, in the two years that I've been on the board, this just seems like it's been a constant. Question of, you know, okay, um you, you know, we're gonna be putting in um DV fiber. And it's gonna cross the road, I'm like, is that crossing the road or is it crossing the trail? I mean, just those kinds of real, real. On the ground questions about how, how we manage this distinction. Between class four roads and trails, we know that is the responsibility of the select board to reclassify roads. Or trails as appropriate, um but it, it does feel like where this is all coming from is. Kind of that development pressure, right, of, you know, let's keep, and you know, we're a town, as, as I think. Um those of you who were able to um be with Colin Breton from the Wyndham Regional Commission, we are a town that has. A huge amount of roads without very many people to support those roads, and so that historic. Um fact that the town had a lot of settlers years ago. Um still is causing budgetary pressures for us as a town today, so just um, just to say. Um I appreciate that, that I, we've been able to get some of these diverse opinions about. Um class four roads and trails, it does feel like it's gonna ricochet back to the select board. Um in the context of doing an ordinance that, a highway ordinance that is updated from the one that we have, which was back in the eighties, I believe. Um so, um it's a complicated issue, seeing it from a lot of different angles, having a lot of input is really important. it's a complicated issue, seeing it from a lot of different angles, having a lot of input is really important, I think, for the town to move ahead with it.
So you may not, to um, to answer this question at this time, but i- does it seem like there's an appetite to allow or not allow development on the roads and trails at this point? Because that was kind of the, the question that was posed to us and I didn't really know.
The town, the town plan and, and uh, regulations to date say that you may not, you may not use something that is not a highway as frontage. So, um, so that, that there, right there is the current distinction. Um, and we are also aware of, and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is also tracking um, indeed, some, some court cases that may influence how that, how that gets interpreted statewide too, so.
Okay, so stay tuned.
My, yeah. My impression is that there is public interest, not direct, like people both want to be able to develop however they see fit and they want their property taxes to stay low, and those two things are directly in conflict with each other.
Sure.
Because the more people develop on less maintained roads, the higher our cost of road maintenance, and then people are upset because they have to pay a higher tax cost for road maintenance.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Okay.
My opinion, people want less, but they don't know that.
Conservation commission perspective, trails are a recreational resource.
Right.
And, and should be kept as such a town right of way, but it's a resource for the town.
Right.
And the, the issues around trails range from what Edie discussed, which is road frontage, is that a road or not? And according to the orange, Vtrans, Orange Book and other things, it's, it's not a highway, so there's no road frontage. But then there's also the question that's in some other towns where there's a discussion about who can use the trail and who should maintain the trail? Should the landowner of the town? Can the town direct activities onto it? So I think there are separate questions. There's a road frontage question, and then there's a usage and maintenance question. And it helps to divide.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, like, I, I recognize your stance.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Would all that be covered in an ordinance?
Well, I, I think that's part of the discussion, which is how to direct that, because I think the the part that's received the greatest pressure, at least that I see in Halifax, is the road frontage question.
Right.
And there's been discussion in law cases about
Yeah.
Is it road frontage, not road frontage?
Right, and I think that's why I was partly confused when we had, you know, the attorney come visit. It actually made my view on the whole thing more convoluted than when I started.
I must say, it, it, I, from what I understand of it, it wasn't a clear decision. So I'd like to get a second opinion.
Yeah.
But it, it's also a question, if you can clarify the road frontage part, then the, the use and maintenance part, is the land, private uh, is a landowner responsible for maintaining it or not?
Yeah.
And there's a law case in Taunton, Vermont about that.
Okay.
Um, I, I think there could be some, at least clarity on a number of issues. And the road frontage issue is the one that relates most to development.
Okay. That's helpful clarification, like just on terms of the issues, and thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And one thing I would add, and a town is probably already familiar with this or aware of it, but and, and doing that type of ordinance, there's the question of if someone's looking to develop on a class four road, that's not currently maintained by the town, you can require that they bring it up to town standards, that road to access the property where they're developing. But I think it's important to keep that separate from the town agreeing to take over uh, maintenance responsibility of the road, so you, you could require someone just bring it up to town standards, but it's continues on as a private road, that's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain.
What sort of liability falls to like fire and ambulance and if it's, if they don't keep it up to standard?
And that's the, that's the tricky part, cause then, and so I just would bring that up as I think you can make this, uh, good to make that distinction by saying, if, you know, if the town wanted to do it, saying we'll allow you to develop it, you gotta bring this up to our standards and you're responsible for maintaining it. But there's a new property owner, they're not town has some responsibilities for letting, you know,
Yeah.
for fire response, emergency services. So.
If the town goes to them and says, look, you're gonna have to bring this back up again.
Yeah, so that's where it gets tricky and I, okay, yeah.
It doesn't get tricky if it's privately owned though, right? Like if the town isn't involved, if it's a class four unmaintained road by the town, now it becomes a private.
Hmm, no, there, I mean, there are a couple of, there are a couple of places in towns that are lanes.
Hold on, there's three people talking.
Um, one first thing I wanna do is, um, the first thing I wanna do is, um, mention, if somebody wants to make me co-host, you might be able to do things like mute, um, Bill. Cause Bill's, Bill's mic is on and I don't think he knows that we're all hearing what's going on in his place. Um, so, so anybody who's a host could mute someone, and now he is now muted, great. Um, so that'll help with the background noise. Um, now I've forgotten the question.
I was asking about the class four, like if it's
I do need.
Yeah. Oh, I thought she was talking.
The, the town would have to give up a class four road.
To make it a private.
To make it a private road.
Yeah, I would presume that that would be the case, but, but yeah, uh, there are private roads that the town has nothing to do with. Um, that, that are not listed as class one, two, three, four, or legal trails, right? Um, so there are some roads that, that are like that in town. Um, and uh, yeah, it sounds like that would have to be a road reclassification issue. But, you know, we do have property owners who, who, you know, brought their uh, road up to class four and now they're plowing it, but what happens if they sell the land? And then we don't know if that, that, if they're gonna, if how the landowner will have long-term maintenance on, on that, to that piece of property, you know, is, is that then become a town responsibility somehow? All of those questions are, are tough ones, and we even have one instance of a road that we plow, um, it was made a class three road some, a few years back. Um, but we don't plow it all the way to the very end because there's no turnaround, and now there is a resident in Whitingham who was saying, you know, plow, plow further. And, you know, Whitingham made their, discontinued the road on their side, right? So, transportation is a system. It's complicated, there's lots of edge cases that are not easy to decipher, and so the clearest that we can make any sub, any ordinance, the better off I think the town will be, right? So.
Yes, it's my understanding from a town planning perspective and conservation perspective, we don't wanna give up any class four roads or town trails.
We don't wanna give up the right of way.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Kyle, you had something?
I don't know if it's, I was just kind of bumping back to what she had said, if your plan, if you had planned to just say, we're gonna make this a private road, privately maintained um, and then back to like the fire and the ambulance question, is that any different than, let's say, someone who has a quarter of a mile long driveway? That's privately owned anyway, if an ambulance or the fire department ever had to get out to the end of it. Just curious what the I mean, that's, I feel like the correlation there is somewhat relevant.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I think it has to do with, you know, the next time that that person subdivides the property. You know, how does that, how does that then get maintained? And I, I can tell you that the, the case I just mentioned going into Whitingham, I, I found an old document from when that property was very first subdivided, and it said, oh, the people on, on all of these, um, all of the four people who are subdividing are gonna maintain that road. Well, guess what happened a few years later? The town took it over and now we're, now we're plowing, not all the way to the end of it, right? So, I mean, those, that's, that becomes the issue of, um, you know, the length of it and then subdivisions, and then how does it, how does it get maintained? So. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, Matt, Matt, do you have any examples of town ord- highway ordinances or?
Well, I would recommend, um, uh, just reaching out, reaching out to Colin at our office, he has a lot of examples, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
And it looks like Leslie has a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leslie?
Leslie?
Leslie.
It's actually Penfield. Um, I think there was a court case a while ago, um, um, uh, that came up in Wilmington around this issue about the, um, they wanting that, the, to upgrade the roads and, and then maybe trying to turn it private, but then the, um, they had a conflict for the fire, um, with the fire department in terms of safety access to those roads. So I remember from, like fifteen years ago, I just remember there was a court case in, in Wilmington about that. I don't know if anybody wants to look that up.
And what was the court case about?
Must be, uh, somebody had a fire, so the, I'll be the fire department said, we're not going out there.
Yeah.
Um, there are some awful driveways in certain places.
Um, yeah.
Um, okay, yeah, um, yeah, so this, this is a good start, um.
But see, if somebody, see, in my aspect, if you're gonna build, like, say, a steep driveway, and there are some steep driveways, I wonder, like, does Patty or do we have a, a thing saying, you know, like we're not liable if something happens? I mean, you know, like a fire or, I mean, cause they have to know when they build up there that, you know, if we have an ice storm and something happens.
I, I guess it's, i- if it's private, that's, that's on them, right, yeah, nothing to do with the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Private bridges fall into that same place, right? Like, you know, there's, there's something, a place that's subdivided across Route one twelve from me, and there's four properties across the bridge that, should it go out during the next Irene, hmm, where do we go?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Could I just say, Edie, is, is there a schedule yet for when the select board?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'm doing my best to, to manage the chaos, but it's been hard with, um, with, uh, you know, people, um, with vacancies in various directions. We are, we are closing in on finishing the budget and then we have like just a month and a half until town meeting. Um, I would love to say that we were on track with everything that we wanted to take care of this year, we're not, but, um, the, you know, we do recognize it as important.
Just want to get a sense, so that we, we have a schedule for providing you with what you need, that's all.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're all on the same page, and as long as we're all aware of where we're at, we can keep moving forward with it, um. I guess, yeah. Um.
Keep nudging. Yes.
Uh. Does the conservation committee have any other major concerns regarding town trails or class four roads?
Let me ask members of the conservation commission if you have any questions or concerns you'd like to raise at this point? Either Mary or Laurel, Leslie? Nope.
I'm pretty clear, thank you.
Okay, not right now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What do you think, Matt? We just keep plugging along at it?
Yeah.
See where it goes?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, um, like I said, Colin, uh, definitely has a lot of good examples of ordinance, and this I mean, this is definitely the type of ordinance where there are a ton of examples from across the state, cause many towns have them. There are maybe too many, and might, but he can, uh, you know, he has experience working with other towns, um,
Yeah.
and looking at this issue, so he can probably, instead of giving you ten, just giving you like, you know, three examples that work the best, um.
We just need to know what to, how to address a development issue.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and it seemed, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed kind of that we were of similar ilk that people really shouldn't be developing along trails, so that was kind of like, that was like threshold.
Right, right.
Maybe somebody in the audience feels.
Vermont state law, they can't.
Well, again, I felt a little convoluted when we met with the attorney a couple of months ago, I was like, well, maybe.
Yeah.
If they did that stuff.
Yeah.
And if it's helpful, I'd be happy to arrange for Colin. Ask Colin to come to either another joint meeting or to a meeting of the conservation commission.
Yeah, we can do that.
Make a way to
Yeah.
have that discussion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to come to a conservation meeting if you can, yeah, sure. Yeah. Okay, um. Uh, okay, uh, the only other thing we had on was to discuss permits. And we'll involve Kyle on this, and I know we've talked about it before. Um.
Do you want me to give up my seat so Kyle can?
No, 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 no.
You're good.
Yeah, he's fine, um. I don't, I don't, do we have anything else for Matt or do we need him for this? I don't wanna hold off.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would love to stay, I, I, you know, but back-to-back meetings, I'm, I'm pretty tired.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I was in, I was in Ward's Borough last night, so.
Yeah, no, we.
It's like the post, post holidays, everyone.
Yeah. Really appreciate you coming and
Yeah, it's nice to meet you all.
For the information.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming on.
Good to get, uh,
Yeah.
You know, put a face to the name.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Uh, I just head back up to Green River Road and
Yes.
I live in Putney, so I just, once I get on Green River Road.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, um, but just note too, I'm a resource too, so
Yeah.
like if you have even just kind of, you know, one, like a one-off straightforward question about, like, you know, we're working on our zoning bylaw update. We're trying to figure out how to define this, I can provide you with examples from other towns.
Excellent, actually.
Yeah, so I'm happy to attend meetings, but I'm happy to just kind of over email, send you stuff, so.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, so that's what I.
Yeah, the, the information you sent on the tiny houses, short-term rentals and all that was perfect.
Good, yeah, that's great, yeah.
Clears it up for you.
A lot of this.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone, on Zoom.
It's been you. It's good to meet you.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, send the contact information over for whoever at the state to, to Tom, you know, and all of
and if I don't have your contact, I'll go.
Send it to Stephen and then, yeah.
I'll share that one.
Yeah. I can give it to Kyle.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Great.
Thanks again.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Um. So we've been over these permits and I think Stephen has a bunch of stuff to go as well.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah, you might as well join us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Um, I don't think we need to put on a whole bunch of stuff that isn't gonna help
No.
you and the listeners.
The simpler the better, as long as it gets the point across.
Yep.
Um.
And we'll see what Stephen's position is on that, um.
Very, yeah, uh, and then I think, uh, Edie, if I can ask you a question? Uh, regarding, uh, the town permits, if we revise any of them, we can revise them and run them by the select board and approve them, or?
That's a great question. I don't know who formally approves them. It feels like I found some historic information about the last time, uh, some of these were um, under revision, including finding, you know, a key word left off of the driveway permit, but anyway. Um, I, I think, um, I, I am not aware what the process would be for changing them. I think the thing that's difficult to keep in mind is just that sometimes forms cascade to other places or other, you know, other instances, so what we were trying to achieve with the driveway permit changes that we are making is recognizing that sometimes that's the first step to somebody just getting access to their land. So the attorney advised us to keep it relatively simple and try not to ask too many things. But at the same time, it, it becomes important to the record, I think, to have things like you know, what is the name of the road, um, or what is the number of the road, uh, or the number of the legal trail you're, you're, you're talking about? You know, trimming branches from or whatever, so all of that to say, we're trying to broaden the intention of the driveway permit to make it clear it is a town right-of-way permit. If you are trying to do something like revise a driveway, you still need to check in with us and put in a new permit. Um, so, um, so in regards to the driveway permit, we have been working with town council and we will run it past them again before we finalize it. Um, but we, we found errors like the permit said thirty dollars, but the fee schedule says thirty-five. So I'm changing it up to the thirty-five, cause that seems like what the intention was there. Um, so just, um, recognize that as you go through this process to change things, um. Few things you should know, um, we split the road commissioner position off from the highway supervisor, so if you see the word road commissioner somewhere, stop and check, who's really doing that? Often now it's really the highway supervisor, um. Uh, you know, I don't remember other parody issues, Stephen. You know, I don't remember other parody issues Stephen might, um, but just that sense of trying to, you know, update language um, to the extent that you can, and keep in mind that this, you know, filling out forms is nobody's idea of a good time, but it does give the town valuable information on which to base future decisions, right? So um, so, you know, we we did things like added, please give us your email address. Because it wasn't on the line before.
With with the driveway permit is if it's really a right of way permit, then it covers all class roads and trails.
Yep.
If it's a driveway permit on the assumption of road frontage, then it only covers class one, two, three, and four, and it doesn't include trails because it has no road frontage to it. So there's, there's a little bit of confusion between right of way permit and driveway permit, I think.
And I think we might have tried to address that with checkboxes on the form, but um, but I'll circle back and look at that again, Steve.
But I I just, in general, I had one question, and it's really maybe for Kyle, which is the, most of the permits, the new parcel zoning application, conditional use, do not touch on environmental qualities of the property.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if we shouldn't be including requesting information about uh, streams, rivers, wetlands. Just if if when someone's doing their uh, plot plan, if they know about it, if they can include that, that might be useful, but I don't want to make it on this.
Yeah, I mean, there are rules and regulations of building too close to streams and wetlands.
Yes.
So that wouldn't be a horrible idea, yeah. I don't think it's ever been an issue.
Is there, there's instructions on including the plot plan. I can't remember if in the Yeah, if it says, please.
I don't think it includes uh, wetlands or
It doesn't. Um, I don't know if the plot plan does or not.
It sort of setbacks and added distances and
Yeah.
And things not.
It it's, it uh, asks you to include um, existing trees, shrubs, and other vegetation.
Yes.
But it does not specifically ask for that. If we wanted that to be put on the application, I would myself just say put it in the plot plan requirements to show in the in the pop, in the plot plan. Um, not necessarily directly on the fill out of role.
It's just trying to get it somewhere, because one of the questions, especially for conditional use, is are they bumping up against any environmental problems?
Yep. Yeah.
And and right now, it it's oriented toward the project description. It's not oriented toward any impacts.
Always, right?
For what? Like a conditional use?
Or a new, yeah.
If you haven't in the past.
But if if it came to us, if a, if if one came to us, I mean, we've done site visits before.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, okay.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good idea to put that.
Yeah.
Those, that's a good place to start.
Now, were you specifically speaking of like putting it in the plot plan requirements, or are you speaking of putting it in what I would call the application?
I was asking where would best?
I would recommend the plot plan requirement, if so, when you're gonna, everybody has to draw a picture of what you're gonna do and everything around it, I would recommend putting it in there, and if
Hundred feet.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know.
Yeah.
And I would be, I would caution you to potentially put language in there that references a state law, because right now the burden would be on the landowner to to obviously make sure that their setbacks are in accordance with whatever state law it is. We put something on our paper that now the town is checking off, and we say, oh, yeah, sure, go build there. And then they turn around and they say, town let me do it.
Yeah.
Now the burden could potentially be shifted to us.
Now, adding on to that, I think if you really wanted to, like if it was a serious concern, we could add it on to section eleven, which states the shortest distance from structure and that type of stuff, you could put a wetland or environmental string, whatever. So what's, you know, what's your closest, what's the shortest distance to the closest wetland? Yeah.
Or or you could go like, you know, if under a hundred and fifty feet, please include, or something like that, just to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't know quite the right language, but I want to get the the water bodies or water issues, because that's where a lot of the environmental triggers are.
Right.
Yeah.
For floodplain or
I just kicked the guy out of here.
Granted, that comes up for um, for wastewater, so if you go through, you know, the engineering process for that.
Yeah.
The regional engineer is absolutely gonna look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, not setback for your well in your.
Yep.
Um.
Bonnie?
I, looking at the sample plot plan, which is very well done, it zeroes in on the specific development area um, close up. But on a somewhat larger site um, required by the town for acreage, you may have a driveway uh, or other access issues that are going to cross burnout pools, wetlands, streams, or whatever, and if somebody was going to include that in their plot plan, then the detail on their development area gets really small. So it's possible that you might on the application form have a checkbox of are there any wetland or wat- water body issues involved uh, that would be impacted at all by development, including access, something like that, that just would be a checkbox um, in case the the plot plan really can't cover that.
If the, it's it's poss- it's possible, but the landowner might not be cognizant of it.
Right.
Yeah.
I do want to take back what I said before, it is on the plot plan requirements currently.
Okay.
Um, location of all streams, rivers, and wetlands.
Okay.
It it already is on our plot plan requirements, so
Yeah.
Um, if we wanted to go further with it, I think my best recommendation would be just to do a section like we do with the others, of how far you are.
And and I think you would also, uh, we're going to make a change that would encourage or include current use.
Yes.
Programs.
A check, just a checkbox to basically say, yeah, your day.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, do we have a certain meeting that we know of so far, a date of when we're gonna be rewriting?
We'll have to just do do one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just, well, I can.
You mean like for when we start, because that's like a Yeah. Many meeting. Yeah, I was just gonna say, what year do we have to do that?
The permit.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the permit, maybe Tina can just whip one out real quick.
Okay.
Add a few things.
You know, I love to hear that.
Maybe Tina can just.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have to rewrite
That's what I thought. I thought twenty twenty five, we have to do.
Yeah, that's what I
What does the date say?
March first, twenty sixteen, so I think it's a year from now, correct? And we've got to bring it to town meeting.
What, seven years?
Eight, ten years. Yeah, it's two thousand twenty eight, I think.
But what about our zoning regs?
I don't, I don't think the zoning regs have a, have a duration to, but I'll check.
Okay, thank you, no, that would be great.
I thought they did, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we did these together when I did it, and uh, that's, I don't think, I don't know.
Somebody will let us know.
Yeah.
But but I think if if we could do a draft and circulate it among both commissioners.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a many meeting process, I mean, yeah.
In regard to this, yeah.
We're talking about both here at the same time.
So do you, do you want to make a point at our next meeting to to actually formally annotate that and then we'll send it over to the confirmation?
One, yeah.
Honestly, I mean, if, obviously Tina's not here today, but if that's something that she's willing to take on, um, I can kind of draft up what we've talked about already and just
Maybe she can do it before, and then we can meet at the next meeting.
Yeah, this is what we talked about, if you can find a good spot to put it in the permit. She, other than myself, she's the next one that has to deal with them, her, Mary, so
Okay.
Um, it would be kind of.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I I'd put it in, or I'd come in with her and help her do the draft.
Yeah, I'm willing to do the same thing.
Yeah, great. All right, so.
You just let me know when.
All right.
Would you mind in the interim, or I could do this as well, um, trying to find some state regs on that, what are the rules and regs for wetlands? Just so we know, you know, state says you can't build within, I I don't know what they are.
It's right in our regulations currently.
If that's the regulation.
And then I also, I do believe it also states what the state regulations are in.
I'm not sure I could find an easy summary, I might find a tone. I'll look for a short summary.
So, uh, so we're gonna revise.
Do you want to start with conditional use?
That's probably the we can, we can do this and the conditional use.
That's, those are our main used ones, those would be the smartest ones to get out of the way first.
Okay, so. So maybe when's, when is your uh, conservation meeting?
If we have one this month, it'll be the fourth Thursday.
So maybe I can get ahold of Tina, and we can get a draft done up before then, see if you guys have anything else.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll check with the conservation members about
Yeah.
Doing a meeting and I'll put that on.
And then we'll have it for February meeting.
If I miss something, once we're done with it, do we know who actually puts that in play yet, or is that still a question?
Nope, we just put it, put it out there, right, Edie?
I I think that the process last time was just get it updated on the website. Um, but I I don't know, um, yeah, I don't know if you guys have to make formal motions to approve it, or kind of how, how that works.
Have a regular meeting and do all that.
Okay.
And then. Okay, we'll start with those.
Just let me know when I'll meet.
So we'll start with the uh, which is basically the conditional.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of.
Yeah.
They're a little different.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll look at both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, make sure they're consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The conditional use is a little more involved than
Yeah, Kyle, just for your information, so section four eleven here, it says, the location of all proposed land development must be reviewed by the zoning administrator relative to these maps, referring to wetland inventory maps, uh, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit in order to ensure full compliance with mandatory state wetland protection rules.
So we just have to look that up?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we just, you know, we should all know, we should all know. Yeah, so I think it sounds like we kind of need to get ourselves to snuff a little bit of where are these wetlands in our town.
Right.
Um.
There's two books to these, so what do you have?
This is the zoning regs, not the town plan.
Okay, do you have a town plan? Because I think it talks about
The wetlands?
And I believe.
I'll be does.
It probably wouldn't be hard to figure out what the statute is anyway.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, but it, I mean, since there is a, a national inventory map of wetlands.
Yeah.
You know, that's just something we should have quick access to and and understand where are these.
Yeah, those definitely natural areas and
could add to our.
There's a couple of them over there, might be.
Yes. We get more technologically sophisticated, we'll just layer it on the GIS stuff.
Well, there's a fantastic website. Every, every aspect of a parcel.
Did you find it?
Well, page thirty nine.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's natural area.
But I don't see anything saying wetlands for sure, but maybe, I don't know.
I'll do some digging.
I don't know why, I feel like I've seen something about, I feel like I have, I don't know where, when, but I felt like at some point in one of the books, I saw something about the regulations of how far you had to go. But it wouldn't be hard to figure out.
Okay. Anything else on the permits, or you wanna?
Can I make one more comment? One of the things that I want to do with the right of way permit, formerly just the driveway permit, um, is for for my own self and for the for the select board, uh, as we kind of manage those, is really look at this also from a process perspective. And to think about if I were somebody who needed to put in such permit, how would I know, um, you know, wh- how would I approach the form? But then, once it gets to the town office, just knowing who touches it and when, and when it gets passed to the next person, and when it gets passed to the next person, and who else we might consult with. It's, it, you know, and the fact that the driveway permit, as Attorney Fisher said, okay, this is often the first thing that people have to do, and that, you know, in order to get your other permits, you have to have a driveway permit, right? So that whole process of the life cycle of what happens to this permit from step one to step two to step three is something that's going to be helpful for our board, because many of us are new on it, and you know, the the kind of basic things like who sends it back to the landowner? That, those are questions, you know, do we need to make a copy for the select board files? We did not do that for like a period of one and a half years, because we had changes in our secretary. Um, and it just became this, this sense of like, I'm like, I don't know where this goes and when. So think about that with your forms as well, just because I think it's useful sometimes to understand how easy the form is to understand and what, and how easy it is for somebody who's trying to do the right thing by going through the process, where, you know, what stumbling blocks can we help remove from them by virtue of us understanding where we want things to flow, so that was my final comment.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
May I raise one question?
Yep.
Um, Edie, is there a new checkoff question on the driveway access form for saying, is the property landlocked? If there should be.
No, I think, I think that we didn't, we didn't do it that way, I think we put um, feet of land frontage or something. I'll have to look at it again, Bonnie, but um, but the, you know, again, that's sort of one of the things that I didn't know was I didn't know that if there was a, uh, there's a designation of a number, 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 and then the letter B for back, and there's only ten properties in Halifax that have that designation of B for back. But how would I know that by looking at, you know, a crazy number? So I think we did try to address that, but I don't think we said, you know, is there a checkbox for landlock? No, it doesn't make sense, because that's, you know, like such a small percentage of the land, but we are asking for road frontage in feet, I believe. And I can open up the modified form, which is still not approved, um, but I can take a look at that for you.
Okay, I I would merely say, I think they're, based on this recent experience, that there are people who would list road frontage of what their parcel would be if it were on the road, that is the width of the parcel, and claim that's road frontage when they actually don't have access to the road.
I I'm not sure that there was an intentional misstatement, or, you know, and I think that some of the, some of the form language that we highlighted and, you know, wasn't, was bolded and was overlooked, and then there was, you know, stuff on my part where I I, you know, was really feeling pressure to get this done, because I was told that it had been given to us earlier, I don't think it was given to us, but you know, we didn't know where the original was. All of that to say that when we have forms, we want to make sure they're fit for purpose, and that we have the information that we need. At this point, what we have is frontage on town highway, on town highway, doesn't say, you know, um, whatever, but it says a number of feet, and we're asking for the deed reference in the book. But again, from a legal process perspective, um, you know, it it was on the landowners to get um, to get other, other right of, right of ways, and so it is your responsibility to acquire any other necessary permits that you might need in relation to the work you were proposing prior to starting the work. That was already there, and the person did say on this particular form that it was landlocked, but I simply did not.
They did say, all right, mine, I did not know that, okay, thank you.
It's, it's an error, it's, it's a, it's a multi, you know, blame can be passed all the way around, I take a lot of it on myself, but from a, you know, from a perspective legally, it wasn't my job to go look that up, right? So we did, we didn't do what I would love to do. We didn't do what I would love to do, which is be kind to neighbors and, and explain the process a little bit better. Uh, to the extent that the forms can help that, that would be ideal, but no form is perfect either.
Right, nothing. No. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, guys, if there's no other business, like take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? No hearing of visitors, right?
Oh. Nancy? Any? Any hearing of visitors?